Hudson Board of Education, Tuesday, May 11th, 2010. Thanks for coming this evening. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Board members have a copy of the agenda in front of them. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second.
A second by Tom. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Next, I ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to election of school board offices, officers, which we do every year at this time. We're going to start out following these guidelines for both the president officer, vice president, treasurer, and clerk officer. And we're going to start out with the president. First of all, the nominations, there can be three calls for nominations. More than one person can be nominated at any given call. The second is not necessary for nomination. If only one person is nominated, a unanimous voice vote for that person is cast and the person is declared elected. So I think board members have that information in front of them, so I'll entertain a motion for, or a nomination for president.
Mr. President would like to nominate Barb Van Loonan for president.
Okay, we have a nomination for Barb Van Loonan. Do we have a second nomination? Call for a second nomination? If not, entertain a call for a third nomination. There being no other nominations for president, I'll enter, we'll have a voice vote. All those in favor of Barb Van Loonan as president of the school board, all say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motions approved. Congratulations, Barb. So I'll turn over the gavel to Barb.
Please bear with us for just one moment. All right, I will continue on with the election of officers and entertain a nomination for the office of vice president.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Mr. Tom Holland to serve as vice president.
Okay, Tom Holland has been nominated. Is there a second nomination? One more time, is there another nomination for the office of vice president? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Tom Holland being elected as the vice president for the school board, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Continuing on, the nomination, open the floor for nominations for the role of treasurer.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Mr. Brian Bell for treasurer.
Mr. Bell has been nominated for treasurer. Is there a second nomination, a different nomination for treasurer? Any other nominations for the role of treasurer? Hearing none. Those in favor of Brian Bell as treasurer for the school board, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Mr. Bell, thank you. And finally, I will accept a nomination for the role of clerk.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Dan Chernohai for clerk.
Dan Chernohai has been nominated for the role of clerk for the school board. Is there another nomination? Another nomination for the role of clerk? Hearing none. All those in favor of Dan Chernohai serving in the role of clerk for this year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations. So this is the slate of officers for the next 12 months. Barb Van Loonan as president, Tom Holland as vice president, Brian Bell as treasurer, Dan Chernohai as clerk. Thank you to those who are willing to stand in that role. I would like to say a particular thank you to Dan for his role as president over the past few years. You have served us well. We're glad you're still an officer and on the school board, and I have big shoes to fill, so thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Madam President.
And for Mr. Mark Kaiser-Schatz, for your service as vice president over the past few years, thank you as well. Okay. The next item on the agenda is staff and student recognition.
Thank you. I want to invite Chase Pasquale to the microphone, please. I have the honor this evening of introducing Chase Pasquale, Jr., at Hudson High School. He has earned a perfect score, a score of 36 on the ACT. And we were notified by Chase's parents and Chase of this news. The district does not receive ATC scores directly. We need to be notified. So we're thrilled that they're willing to share this high honor. We want you to know that less than half of 1% of all the students that take the ACT receive a 36, so this is a rare honor. Chase actually has been in the Hudson schools from kindergarten through 11th grade. He was a student at Hudson Prairie, then obviously Hudson Middle School, and now Hudson High School, so he is truly one of Hudson's own. I'm going to let Chase talk a little bit about his plans for the future, and then Chair, I'll ask you to join me with, I have a certificate for us to give Chase.
All right, well, thank you first of all. And I'm not quite sure about my plans yet. I plan on looking more into that this summer, but right now I'm considering out east somewhere, maybe Ivy League, particularly Princeton, so that's where it's at right now.
They also shared with me that he received his 36 his first time taking the ACT. Some of us who have students who've done that know that they can come back and take the test again and again, and often they'll prep themselves, but this is his first try and he has a 36, so. We can go back in our records, since the school's not notified, we can go back in our records, ACT helped us a little bit. We just know for certain that since 2000, 2010, we have not had a 36. We can't say we've never, but as far as 10 years, we have no one on record that has had a perfect score, so this is just quite an accomplishment for Chase and the Hudson School District.
Thank you.
Chase, while they're doing that, I just want to say a couple things here. Certainly, congratulations. This is one of the highest academic honors that you can achieve, and you honor the Hudson School District by being one of our students. And I want to say thank you to you, congratulations to your parents, certainly, and thank you to all the teachers who have helped facilitate your learning through kindergarten through 11th grade at this point. But it's great to have you in the Hudson School District, and it's an honor for us to have you as one of our students. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our second recognition is actually of our entire music staff, so I'm going to ask them to step forward as well. We have four representatives this evening. We have a few conflicts this evening, especially at the middle school, they have an academic program also going on this evening. But the NAM organization, National Association of Music Merchants, has recognized Hudson as their 2010 Best Communities for Music Education, and that's due to the commitment and support of music education in our schools. There are 174 school districts, district, or state nationwide that were selected. This has only been going on for 11 years, and this is our third time being recognized in those 11 years. And so, we have Aaron Hilden, he is a band teacher, instrumental teacher at the high school. I'm going to blow this, aren't I? Megan Anders, right here at Rivercrest, Amy Galick at Rivercrest, and Linda Walburn at North Hudson. And Barb, I have certificates again, if you would show them.
And I would want to extend Sandy's comments, just to thank our music educators. It starts with you, and it's wonderful that the board has supported the arts in our academic program as being so important that it's now included as one of those fundamental areas in our HSD 2025. So thank you to you and all your fine work that you help our students learn each and every day. We appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report, Mary.
Well, first I have the honor of recognizing a previous board member, Cindy Crimmens. Would you please come up, Cindy? Cindy, as we all know, has served on the Board of Education since April of 2004, when she was first elected, so she was elected for two terms on the Board of Education. And she served as the clerk of the board in 2006, '07, and 2007 to 2008. She served on the Finance and Budget Committee, she's served on the Communications Committee, and served as chairperson of that communications person, committee, and provided the foundation for a comprehensive communication plan that we've moved forward based on Cindy's leadership and the other board members. She also worked on the Policy Committee, significantly on the Policy Committee, and she was chairperson of that committee, and really provided the work that supported the revisions of all of our policies. So we have been very blessed to be able to have, take advantage of Cindy's wonderful writing skills in our policies, and there's evidence all the way through our policies of that. She has served, most recently, on the Personnel and Negotiations Committee, the Governance and Policy Committee, and then Learning and Program Development Committee as well. She also served on the Curriculum Council for a few years, and the Co-Curricular Advisory Council. I don't know if I've hit everything on the board, and certainly over six years, Cindy, I don't think I could have, but I hope I hit the highlights that stick out to you. Cindy has been a passionate advocate for students and for our staff members, and been very considerate of parents and their point of view in her decisions. She's forward-thinking, and she's always been, we have evidence of her high intelligence that she offers to the board, and her ability to articulate her ideas and thoughts. You know, her education and her data analysis have been one of the gifts, her background in those areas have been one of the gifts that the board has been able to benefit from. That's been very helpful in our discussions and in the board's deliberations. She, I was going to say she has been supportive of HSD 2025, that vision and strategic plan, but that's not a strong enough word, and I don't even think when I say a strong advocate, that's strong enough, because I know that's very dear, near and dear to Cindy's heart. And so, HSD 2025 is the vision that Cindy's had since she got on the Board of Education those six years ago, and promoting that kind of vision for our students and for our schools. And lastly, Cindy was a member of the Board of Education that brought me to Hudson, so I have a real soft place in my heart for Cindy, and being able to work with her over the years, and I really, really appreciate her listening to my commentary on various things, and just being very thoughtful in her deliberations. So thank you for the six years, and being able to work with you for those five years that I've been in the district, Cindy. I imagine there's some other board members who would like to make a couple comments to Cindy, too.
Me first, me first. Thanks, thanks, Mary. Hey, Cindy, first I also want to personally thank you for your service on the Board of Education. I had the privilege of being here your whole six years, and it's really been a joy. And certainly, no one has brought more passionate energy in advocating on behalf of students than you. And even though you sometimes didn't agree with me, I want you to know that I'm going to miss you very, very much, and want to wish you the best of luck in any future endeavors. Thanks again, Cindy.
Now, Chair, Cindy, thanks for your contributions to the board. I think I would echo what Mary had to say, and I think it was very comprehensive and complimentary. Probably one word that I didn't hear in those remarks is courage, because I think in a lot of discussions that we've had over the past, you've demonstrated some courage over your beliefs, and I think that has to be respected and appreciated as a board member. Not always going with the flow, but just wanting to demonstrate your belief and your point and a position, and as the board president at the time, I truly did appreciate and respect that, so thank you again for your contribution.
And one final comment, Cindy. I only had the privilege of being on the board a few, two years, and I've told you this before, that the perspective that you brought to issues, and I think the depth of thought that you shared with your fellow board members was invaluable, and again, I would say we have some big shoes to fill, so thank you.
I was thinking exactly the same thing that Dan had mentioned about courage, Cindy, in terms of your willingness to step out and offer a different perspective. I think that's so healthy, really, for decision-making bodies like school boards. And, you know, although I didn't always understand, I did real understand your passion and understood your heart, and so I really do have come to respect you and your opinions and your thoughts, and so thanks for your service to our district and we'll miss you.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Cindy, it was great serving with you. We come, sometimes we have different ideas on how to get things done, but I really always enjoyed, and I've come to really appreciate your perspective, and one that, you know, I was always listening to, and even if we didn't agree, it was something that I took seriously, so.
Cindy, I didn't serve very long with you on the board, just two years, but I want to tell you that I most appreciated your passion, and your thoughtfulness, and your willingness to think differently than everyone else, perhaps, at times, and I guess I'd also like to ask that you stay involved, because you do have that passion and you have that energy, and I'd hate to see it go to waste.
Cindy, I thank you for your graciousness through this all, and being a very good opponent. It was a pleasure to, got to know you. You were the first board member I talked to. It's interesting that we've switched places.
Yes, my name is Cindy Crimmens, and I live at...
I guess I just want to, yeah, like I would have nothing to say, right? I guess I just wanted to say it has been just a privilege and an honor to serve the district, and also to serve with all of you, all of you, administrators, board members, principals, the whole leadership team, you know, the faculty and the staff at the, you know, people who are really just touching students every day. It's been pretty amazing. I have to say that I'm a better person for the time I spent working with you, and it's one of the most important things in my mind that I've ever done. And I'm going to do something now that I haven't been able to do on a second Tuesday for a very long time. I'm going to go have dinner with my son, so you'll excuse me if I don't stay to listen to all the rest. But to Pat, I want to say especially, congratulations, and I remember you came to your first board meeting, and afterward we stood in the entryway out there, and you said you were thinking of running for school board, and I foolishly said, "I think you should do that." And I'm really glad you did, and I hope that other people who are thinking about running will step up and get involved. We vow you here citizenship, and I love it that we're demonstrating that. And you, you're just really, I'm going to be so proud of you. How come you didn't come to my house instead of Tony all that time? I could have been learning something while I was supervising all those parties, and it's just been a joy. Thank you very, very much. Thank you to everybody.
Moving right along to the Kern Foundation, although that's hard to follow, you know, I wanted to take a minute to recognize the Kern Foundation and Family Foundation, and their commitment to Project Lead the Way. We have implemented this program over the last year, there's going to be a report this evening, but they have come through with financial backing. Sandy has applied for a number of grants and received $34,000 over three years for the high school program implementation, and then again, they gave us another grant for $25,000 for the middle school implementation starting next year. Sandy's also gone out and advocated for our program and received additional funding, other grant funding. She received $3,000 in an Anne Marie grant, and then, along with Tracy's help, she received $20,500 from the Anderson Corporate Foundation. So put that all together, Sandy has been a strong advocate for this program to the tune of collecting $82,500, and I just want to thank her for that. Certainly, she brought the program and advocated for that at the high school, and again, at the middle school. She supported the implementation, and there is a lot to supporting this implementation, and supporting the expansion to the middle school. And so, I just, I know that she, along with her seeking funding, this is really a feather in her cap for something that she's achieved, and really, just thank you very much for all your work to support this for our students. This is really a program that offers them wonderful opportunities, and you're going to hear about that later this evening. So thank you. And then lastly, as far as my report, I want to talk about the Education Foundation of Hudson, which we are very fortunate to have, supporting our programs and our teachers and our students. And they have just recently awarded five grants to Hudson, to the Hudson schools, at five different schools, for a total of $10,019. And certainly, those are opportunities that we would not be able to afford without their help, their financial help, and we really appreciate that continuing financial support each time grant opportunities come out for our students. They support our teacher work, and then they also support the learning of our students. So thank you so much to the Education Foundation of Hudson. And that completes my report.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Moving on to the reports section of the agenda, we will start with Sandy, Project Lead the Way.
Thank you, and I'm going to ask our team to come on up while I give a little introduction here. As you're aware, we started Project Lead the Way at the high school this past fall, and the first course in the sequence is Introduction to Engineering, or as we all know is IED, and then next year we'll have, yep, all three of you can come on up. Principles of Engineering will start then in the fall, so this evening we have our instructor, Dan Whalen, and two of our students who have put together a PowerPoint to give us a little glimpse of what the heck is Intro to Engineering, what kind of things do they do, and I think you'll be very impressed. And my kudos to Dan, who took this on last summer, went through an intensive training component, and I think we can honestly say he has found his calling. This is, this is the part of teaching that he has stepped to the plate and found that he really enjoys this part of technology education, the pre-engineering portion, and has quite a wide variety of students now that are coming into the technology education department, and I think will enjoy what we hear. I'm just going to give you some pointers, guys. The red button needs to come up, and then that microphone is on. All right, here we go.
Well, I'll just start off and introduce. With me here is, I have two of my students, this is Camden Drappo right here to my left, and then to his left is Brody Hassel. Brody's a senior, and Camden is a sophomore, and they're just two of my 57 different students I have right now in the first, first-year course that we're doing right now, so I'm going to kind of turn over to them, let them talk about what we're doing right now in our class, so.
So our first project was called the Puzzle Cube, and what we did was, we had to take a bunch of three-quarter inch by three-quarter inch cubes and assemble a puzzle, and it was a nine, it was pretty much the shape of a Rubik's Cube. At the end is a three-by-three cube, and the pieces, we had to sketch them out, and the sketches were isometric, what we call them, and we had to use a decision matrix to decide how we were going to assemble our final product. And then after we drew all the pieces on our notebooks, we were able to sketch them into the Inventor program. Then this is Brody's Puzzle Cube, and then if you just click on the big picture, it'll show it assembling itself. Like the one with the lines going to the blue one?
Oh, it doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't. So if that were to work, it would, the yellow one, all the pieces would assemble, and the blue one is our base piece, so, yeah. Our next project was the miniature train project. We took parts that were drawn out on a packet with detailed dimensioning, and we had to reproduce those parts in the Inventor program, and then we had to use different types of constraints to apply those, to get the train to look as it did. The train on the left would be Camden's, and the train on the right would be mine. I clearly like a little more flair. Also, part of the project was assembling it on three pieces of track using rotational constraints, which you can then drive the constraints in the program and actually make the train move on the tracks. For the design challenge, we had a choice of picking a hydraulic-powered toy, desk organizer, candy dispenser, and also a vehicle emergency... candy dispenser, and also a vehicle emergency kit. For me and Brody, we both picked the hydraulic-powered toy. And in that project, we had a used. Compressed air or gases, pneumatics. And in mine, we created a little marshmallow pipe that would shoot out marshmallows for kids for fun. It was powered by compressed air or CO2, whatever you preferred. And to make it, we had to follow certain constraints and a design brief. It had to be within a certain price and time. And the constraints is a big part and working in like real-life engineering, the time like due dates, that's really important.
On my personal project that I did, we made a rocket that was powered by a stomp pad, where you step on the stomp pad and it'll shoot the rocket in in the air. It featured a pivot pivot hinge so that you could control the angle of what you were launching at. And then our next project was reverse engineering, where we take a simple mechanical item and you disassemble it, you create sketches in a notebook, and then you reproduce the entire product in the Inventor Program. We worked in teams of two. This was my project. We took apart a pilot pen and then we just reconstructed it in the Inventor Program.
The re- uh reverse engineering product I did was a toy front loader for children. In this front loader, a lot of the parts that were hard to make was like the axle rim or like the hubcaps. And then the arms just were really hard to constrain and get the correct angles of the dimensions of like like going down to the scoop. There's a lot of detail in it and we used a dial caliper and some car compasses and took it like the perfect circle on the tires.
Our next project in IED was to take the products that we had just reverse engineered and figure out how we can innovate them to better suit them for the market of which they're looking for. So like for example, the pen that we did, we changed the color and provided more grip. So people would be more intrigued by less pain in your hand after writing. And we did all of that through the Inventor Program. And so that way we had 3D models of what we were actually doing.
On mine for the last slide, um for the innovation, for the front loader, we wanted to create a more fun toy for kids, like just like a plain scoop can get boring after a little while. So we decided to put like a little plastic wrecking ball on the back for every child's imagination to destroy their sandcastle. Yeah. And now or just a little while ago, we were working on ethics. And on my poster, I worked on the ethics of stem cell research. And in there, we were main cause was the embryo, which is how you make stem cells. It's the embryo is killed. And then it's turned in or it's produces into uh three different types of cells, like muscle tissue we can reproduce and gamete cells. And like the main ethic part of that was you're killing an embryo, which is technically a human, so it's illegal in the United States.
For my engineering ethics project, we looked at the failure of a BF Goodrich brake pad that they made for the Air Force. And it was just really nice to see the perspective of what an engineer would look at of why they would do things that would cut a part short in order to save cost for their manufacturers. And I think it really dives into the engineering aspect of like what they would actually have to deal with on a regular day basis. The project that we actually just started this week is called the Virtual Design Project Challenge. And we're working with a high school from Iowa to uh like for my particular one, we're designing a dog supply organizer that will hang off a door. And we just have to work with them and get their feedback as well as our feedback in order to create a project together.
For my virtual design challenge, we decided to go with this. We had to take like a regular mountain bike and say like your average person lives in an apartment and walks home, he needs a place to store that bike. And you can't like just um disturb the walls or anything with nails or tacks or anything. So we decided to go with like a little case where say it was like about four feet tall and it was like a little bar table as you'd say and it would it was hauled and you could just slide the bike in there. And you could use like the table as like a bookshelf or like a counter. And then the kids that we're working with, we were gonna use Skype to communicate like real engineers, how they do it in like the real world. But the kids in our that are partners working later during the day, so we just use email, which is also a major part of like the program. So communication through like long distances.
I mean, just to kinda touch base on what we're talking about in our last project is we have to partner the kids up with uh high schools from other schools. So I kinda get them out of their comfort zone a little bit. And uh we're working with two high schools, one in Harlan, Iowa, and one in Stanwood, Iowa, which is North Cedar High School. And uh both Brody and Camden are in fourth hour, so they're working with North Cedar High School. And you know, they're discovering some challenges that come about through teleconferencing or email or whatever you have to do. So it's definitely a challenge, but uh it's something new and I think they're getting used to. Plus they're working with people they don't really know yet and they have to get to know each other and kind of work on another challenge there too. So uh it's an exciting program and we're really looking forward to taking the next step into Principles of Engineering, which unfortunately Brody won't get a chance to do, but Camden I know is chomping at the bit to get started with it, so. Thank you.
Any questions from the board members for this group?
That was that was pretty good. Uh uh which airplane was that brake on? That that brake that you worked on, Brody? Do you remember?
Something with a seventy N. I don't recall.
SR seventy?
It may have been, yes.
I used to fly airplanes in the Air Force, so hopefully it wasn't the brakes I was using. Just a just a comment. I work at a uh um at a high-tech company um where the uh one of the fastest-growing companies in the technology companies in the US. And uh we sell our product all through Europe, China, you know, and it's interesting to see that the innovation right now for companies like ours are coming out of the US, right? And they're coming out of, you know, we have a hundred engineers, where we hired a hundred people last year and they were all came out of engineering degrees and in our company. So uh it's a huge opportunity out there. And uh I think the world's looking, you know, the innovation's coming out of the US. So um so I think this is just an awesome program. So exciting to see uh your your excitement in teaching and exciting to see the students, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. It was a great presentation. Um it was wonderful. Thank you for allowing them to come in on the agenda and showcase Project Lead the Way and what a great program that is for the schools.
Some of our next steps, um Dan, as he mentioned, now we'll be going to training again this summer for Principles of Engineering. And then we're gonna also have a second high school teacher come on board to do the intro. So we'll have two trained this summer. And then Dan and I are currently working on getting our program accredited. So then our students, um they all will be taking a major test. So this program is similar to AP in that there's a very intense test now at the end of May. And then hopefully they'll have opportunity then in the fall to earn college credit as well.
When you're done with college, uh look me up.
All right, thank you. And Sandy, another recognition or report on middle school students, national recognition.
This is kind of a fun night to showcase all the wonderful things going on in our schools. I'm going to invite up next three amazing eighth graders from Hudson Middle School and their teacher, Chris DeLeone. Come on up, ladies. These ladies have been working since October and I Chris might share a little bit or they might, but they've been giving up pretty much their lunchtime, their after-school time to work on a project titled Waste Limitation Management and Recycling Challenge. And I had the opportunity on April fourteenth to watch their presentation. They were finalists and they actually had to present to a team. And now, not just any team, I want you to listen to some of these people they were presenting to. Uh Jay Garland, Chief Scientist, Kennedy Space Center. John Hogan, Physical Scientist, NASA Ames Research Center. Andrew Jackson, Department Civil and Environmental Engineering, Texas Tech University. Tony Rector, Senior Research Engineer, Hamilton Sunstrand Space Land and Sea. Deborah Shearer, a Principal at College Park Elementary in Texas. And Greg Boit, Senior Project Manager at Baylor College of Medicine. Quite the team. And I was there at the end of their presentation. They had to be pretty much exact, no more than fifteen minutes. They had to have time for questions and answers. They could not say enough. The panelists that that were listening to the presentation on how polished they were, how how much they had just a quality presentation, their knowledge level shined through, their thinking about what to do with with the program. They were just, I don't know, just overflowing with compliments on these three. So as you listen now this evening, occasionally I want you to like look away or close your eyes because you are not going to believe you are listening to three eighth graders from Hudson Middle School. Chris, you wanna say a few things to introduce?
Might introduce the the project? First off, NASA challenged fifth through eighth graders. Uh and it cost NASA about twenty-two thousand dollars for one liter of water. And so they had a very um you know, it's a money-saving issue as far as recycling the water once they get onto the moon, if they ever do. And uh so that that amount is where or that the money is really what drove this challenge. And so the there was I the NASA chose originally the first or the top twenty teams to interview. Um these girls made it to the top twenty and then from there uh they they placed second.
Mr. DeLe, can you introduce the the young women that are here to present?
Um on the far side is Marley Haroldson, followed by Jessie Hines and then Katie Lofgren.
Okay. Title page, first slide. Our team name is the Hudsonators.
I hate to inter interrupt. If you'd pulled the microphone just a little bit closer, I think everybody in the audience will be able to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Title page, first slide. Our team name is the Hudsonators. We are eighth graders from the Hudson Middle School in Hudson, Wisconsin. To begin with, my team and I just wanted to say thank you so much for this spectacular opportunity. Before this challenge came out to public, we hardly knew anything about water purification and/or NASA themselves. But by the end of this challenge, we can all say we're pretty much experts. We even we have learned so much and we had a blast learning it. We even impressed our science teachers with knowledge they've never learned. We're all very proud to be representing representing the Hudson Middle School. Hypothesis, second slide. Our beginning hypothesis is, if we use existing water purification technologies that are available on the earth, then we can create a low-cost and low-maintenance wastewater management and recycling system that will filter and purify wastewater on the moon.
Inspiration, third slide. We based our water purification project on the water cycle also known as a hydrological cycle or precipitation cycle here on earth because nature has already found an efficient way to purify water and maintain life. When designing our project, we use as many recycled items as possible to keep our project earth-friendly.
Systems, fourth slide. Our water purification project was centered around three main systems. Each of us became experts of one of the three systems. The bio-sand filter engineer was Katie Lofgren, the passive hydroponics specialist was Jessica Hines, and the distillation and activated charcoal filter water clarity expert was Marley Haroldson.
Bio-sand filter, fifth slide. The bio-sand filter was the first stage to our water purification cycle. The main function of the bio-sand filter is to break down ammonia and remove pathogens and other contaminants of matter from the wastewater. This is accomplished by growth, predation, natural death, absorption, and mechanical trapping of the nitrosuminas, a type of bacteria which feed on ammonia. With having one-sixth the gravity on the moon than earth, the beneficial bacteria in wa- in water will have more time contact time with the schmutzdecker. The schmutzdecker is a German word for dirty layer. It is a complex biological layer formed on the surface of a slow sand filter. Slow sand filters work through the formation of a gelatinous biofilm called the hypogeo layer in the top few millimeters of the fine sand layer. The schmutzdecker is formed within the first ten to twenty days of operation and consists of bacteria, fungi, and protozoa. As the schmutzdecker ages, more algae tend to develop. As water passes through, the particles of foreign matter are trapped in the mucilaginous matrix and dissolved organic material are absorbed by the bacteria. At the beginning, we added some oxidized iron so that it will speed up the formation of the beneficial bacteria, which in turn will improve the removal efficiencies of pathogens through enhancing microbial adhesion to the sand grains as well as remove effici- efficiencies of heavy metal. We also added some pond scum and water to help start growing the nitrifying bacteria. Eventually, we added pet school pet store nitrifying bacteria to help digest ammonia faster. If and when astronauts use a bio-sand filter on the moon, the lunar regolith could replace the sand.
Hydroponics, sixth slide. Hydroponics was the second stage to our water purification cycle. With hydroponics, nutrients are delivered directly to the plant's roots in aqueous solution as opposed to the plant taking them straight from the soil. Hydroponics dramatically expands the scope of gardening and makes it possible to grow a wider variety of plants in a wider variety of indigenous climates. Hydroponics uses only one-thirtieth the amount of water compared to soil. An acre of hydroponics can hold over ten thousand plants, whereas an acre of soil can only hold one-third of that. When using hydroponics, growing isn't regulated by seasonal changes, which allows continual growth. We decided to use passive hydroponics instead of active for many reasons. Passive hydroponics is very basic, inexpensive, simple, easy setup, and is very portable. It also requires materials that retain moisture longer such as sawdust and sand. Active hydroponics can be very costly and take up a lot of energy and room. For our growing medium, we use sawdust. Sawdust is a great substrate because it's cheap, common, lightweight, has high water retention, molds, adapts to fertilizer, decomposes, which provides the plants with more nutrients, and absorbs the water faster. On the moon, the lunar regolith could also replace the sawdust. Hydroponics continued, seventh slide. For our hydroponic plants, we only used grass and basil seeds because of their speedy germination. If our project were to be used on the moon, we would be using plants that have nodules on the end of their roots. And we would also be using plants that give off food sources sources such as beans or peas. Another great thing about hydroponics is when the plants sweat, they're giving off pure water in a process called transpiration. Bio remediation is when nitrate impurities stick to the roots' nodules, which is also called nitrate fixation. Also, hydroponic plants can be used not only for purifying water, but for food, for animals, and fertilizer for the next crop of plants. The edible parts of the plant can be eaten by the astronauts. The hydroponic system we built moved most of the nitrates and had the lowest amount of impurities. Nitrates can be very deadly to humans and may cause many health problems. High nitrate levels can cause blue baby syndrome, a condition found in infants under six months of age. The stomach acid of an infant is not as strong as in adults. This causing causes an increase of bacteria that can readily convert from nitrate to nitrite. Nitrites are absorbed in the blood and hemoglobin, the oxygen-carrying component of blood, and is converted to methemoglobin. Methemoglobin does not carry oxygen efficiently, which results in a reduced oxygen supply to vital tissues such as the brain. You can get nitrates in your system from fertilized crops such as corn, manure, animal feed, lots, and septic systems. You should never exceed forty-five milligrams per liter of nitrates and ten milligrams per liter of nitrites, says the Environmental Protection Protection Agency. Not only could hydroponics be used up in space, but also in countries such as Africa that have little to no water or- that have little to no water or food. Hydroponics could not only give thousands of people clean and fresh water every day but also food to eat. I bet if we all pitch in to help raise money for a hydroponic system in each country, we could save thousands of lives every day from starvation and dehydration.
Distillation and activated charcoal filter, eighth slide. The distillation and activated charcoal filter was the third and final stage to our water purification cycle. The activated charcoal filter removes the smell, color, and other biological impurities of the wastewater. The huge surface area of activated charcoal gives countless bonding sites. When the certain chemicals pass next to the carbon-based surface, they attach to the surface and become trapped. Activated charcoal is very good at trapping other carbon-based impurities or organic chemicals as well as things like chlorine. Activated charcoal can be reused or reactivated by heating it up. This can be accomplished by placing it in direct sunlight. The clear hosing system, also known as photolytic system, allows the ultraviolet light to kill some of the bacteria that may be present in the wastewater. Distillation removes salt and other soluble contaminants in the water. This can be done by placing it in sunlight or on a heating plate. Ammonia and nitrate test results, ninth slide. The ammonia test, the ammonia test results were initially high at 300 milligrams per liter and were eventually, over time, reduced to 50 milligrams per liter after being in the biosand filter for 48 hours. Otherwise, after 48 hours, there were no measurable ammonia. Nitrates became present after 24 hours in the biosand filter and were consistent throughout all the tests. BOD, nitrate, and pH level results, tenth slide. The BOD, or biological oxygen demand, fluctuated dramatically throughout the testing stages. This may be because we did not test the BOD every time because of how long it takes to set up and because it takes over five days just to test one sample. After ninety-six hours of being in the biosand filter, the BOD levels dropped, which initiated, indicated the presence of microorganisms. The nitrate levels stayed fairly consistent with the exception of being in the biosand filter after four weeks with the presence of nitrates. This indicates that the ammonia was being broken down into a simpler form. The pH levels ranged from, from between 7.8 and 8.1. Pure water should have a pH of seven. We were very close to reaching seven. Conductivity test results, eleventh slide. The conductivity results decreased when put through the biosand filter and hydroponics. It was decreasing as we kept testing and running the water through the filters, taking out most of the impurities each time.
The lunar best, twelfth slide. Our team believes that our water purification system is the best out of the other nineteen teams because, one, it's very simple and doesn't have many parts to it; two, it's, it's very environmentally friendly; three, really easy to maintain, assemble, and take care of; four, we combined three proven technologies to become one purification cycle; five, it is very low in cost and energy; six, it gives the astronauts a source of food and oxygen from the hydroponics portion; and lastly, it gives the astronauts a sense of home. Most people on earth garden for therapeutic reasons and just garden to keep their minds off of things. So if we have a lunar greenhouse in space, then we can give the astronauts something to do and a reminder of home. Our vision, thirteenth slide. On a site called Google SketchUp, we made our vision on how a lunar greenhouse might look on the moon. Our greenhouse includes many different types of food sources such as trees, corn stalks, tomato plants, bushes, strawberry bushes, berries, peas, beans, and et cetera.
Fun pictures, fourteenth slide. This is a collage of fun pictures that were, that our mentor, Mr. DeLeon, took while we were working on our project. As you can see, we didn't always stay as focused as we should have, but most of the time we had a lot of fun. Effort and teamwork, fifteenth slide. Every day during lunch since this challenge came out in October, my team and I have met and have worked on our project. And on most days, we would also stay after school from 2:30 to 4:30 to work on it. Periodically, we would also work on it during class periods and during our free time if need be.
As you can see, we have all, we have, we all have learned so much from this experience, and we can't thank you enough.
So again, second-place team, National NASA Challenge. Thank you, ladies.
Very impressive. Very impressive.
Questions from the board members for the young ladies before they step away?
Madam President, ladies, do you know how many hours you spent? I know you were talking about sort of after school from 2:30 to 4:30 and whenever you needed to. Do you know how many hours you spent trying to get, just preparing your project?
A lot.
It was fantastic. Very impressive.
Five, six hundred hours, estimated.
Great work.
Part of their second-place packet, it was a package. The middle school received $500. Each of them will then also receive $100 prize.
Congratulations, ladies. Very impressive, really. I just want to say, you know, quite impressive. Certainly, you're demonstrating project-based learning. And we just heard about project-based learning in our pre-engineering course or introduction. And you're doing it in eighth grade. It's wonderful to show the knowledge that you've gained through this project, and it's quite amazing for all of us who are sitting around wondering what some of those words are. And maybe we heard them a long time ago in a, in a science class. But I'd like to know what each of you are thinking about for the future, for yourselves.
I'm not sure, but something in the field of science. Something to do with astronomy, so like science-related.
I don't know at all.
Well, you have a little time, but certainly, we hope you will continue to develop your talents, your knowledge base, your ability to find knowledge and use it and apply it. And that's what you've demonstrated to us, and it's a wonderful exhibition of that. And certainly, congratulations and thank you to Mr. DeLeon, who has supported this effort. I know they may have put in 500 hours or whatever it is, and you probably did as well. So congratulations to you for this achievement, to each of you, and certainly to the proud families that are out there and watching as well. All right. Want to ask Kim Powers to step forward. Kim is an English teacher at Hudson High School, and Kim has been awarded the Young Adults' Choices Project. And I'll just give a little background, and then I'll let Kim tell most of what's going to happen the next few years. The Young Adult Choices Project is sponsored by the International Reading Association, and Kim has been chosen to represent Region Five, and there are five regions in the U.S. And to be chosen, you have to have had the following qualifications: be a member of IRA, knowledge of young adult lit, which Kim is a leader in our young adult lit program at the high school; interest in helping teachers use young adult literature in the classroom; organizational skills; contacts with local school districts in the state; access within a reasonable distance to participating schools; attendance at the IRA National Annual Convention Training Session; be an educator; and then the ability to meet the deadlines. And Kim certainly is one of our shining stars at the high school. And I'm going to let her talk about the project because, again, you heard a little bit, I've seen some of our project-based, this opportunity is going to give our students just an exciting opportunity to have a real-life, authentic experience. Kim, why don't you tell us about the project?
Is that working? Okay. So three goals. One is to develop an annual annotated reading list of new books that will encourage young adults to read. The second is to help teachers, librarians, booksellers, parents, and other people to be able to find books that young adults will read and enjoy. And the third is to provide students with the opportunity to voice their opinions about books that have been written for them. So over the next three years, I'm going to get a significant amount of books. You'll often see that, but next year I'm going to get around 1,000 books, two copies of each title. The following year, I'll get between 12, 50, and 1,500 books, and then the third year, I'll get another 750 to 900 books. And what publishers do is they select books that have been recommended by at least two organizations, whether it be ALA or School Library Journal, and they submit them to the project, and then they send us two copies of each book, and then the students read the books. For each book I get, I need to have two students read it and then vote, whether they liked it, loved it, hated it. And then what happens is those books, those book ballots are collected by the International Reading Association, and then they tabulate the votes between the five regions. And the thirty books that the kids picked that were the best are then created on an annotated list that gets published in their journal and then given out to teachers, librarians, booksellers, things like that. So the students have a real opportunity to create this list and get their voices out there. So it's reading for a real purpose and then writing about books for a real purpose. So it kind of, it's going to come fast because I'm going to start getting the books this June, and then by February, all of them have to have been read and balloted. And then I send the information to the IRA, and then I go to the convention in April. And then I'm responsible for at least two annotations. And so two of the students from either seventh grade through the twelfth grade will be creating an annotation for me, and then I will show it on a video to the convention, at the convention. So that's kind of the gist. Do you have any questions for me?
How do you select which kids, how does it work, you know, which children, students read the books or?
Well, because I'm getting 1,000 books, and for every book I get, I need two readers, I need almost every student to get involved. So, so it's a really big initiative. And so my classes, for starters, I teach a young adult class, so obviously they're going to be involved. But I'm also meeting with people from my department, people in the school building, and then I'm meeting with people at the middle school level because it is seventh through 12. So I'm meeting with teachers at the middle school, and I'll be distributing those books to everyone and then trying to get as many kids as possible to take part.
So this book report they make is going to really make a difference.
Yeah. Yes, because what they do is they, they, they create the ballots, so they fill out the ballots, and then the books that receive the most votes, the top thirty books, are the books that are recommended nationwide. So their votes really do matter because there's only five, five areas that are taking place. And what happens is, is right now, it's a, it's a three-year deal, so I'm in my first, I'm beginning my first year. There is another school in Area Five that's finishing their third year. So there's usually two schools for every five areas, for each five of, each of the five areas. So there's only ten schools that are really participating nationwide. So it's kind of an interesting opportunity for our students. Kim, how many do you, I'm sorry. Kim, how many do you think you read yourself? How many I read? I've already read 40 books this year, but I, I try to read as much as I possibly can. For one, because I teach the young adult lit class, so I'm kind of responsible for getting the best newest books in the hands of my students. But also, I enjoy reading it because I teach it, so I love it. So I try to read as much as possible because kids really, I've made some really good relationships with kids, and they come to me for books. I have a senior boy who still stops in my room. I haven't taught him for three years, and he, he comes into my room and is like, "Where's all the new books?" So it's kind of fun for me, so I read as much as I possibly can.
Just, Kim, maybe Kim already did this, but describe the district. You're the delegate for the fifth district.
Yeah.
Across the country, there are five districts.
There's five districts. So we're part of the, one of the Midwest districts, and there's like six states that are in our region. So I sent in the application form, and they receive however many submissions they get, and then they pick one school to represent that region for three years.
Thank you for bringing the program to Hudson, Kim, and we'll look forward to hearing updates as you work through the three-year commitment that you've made.
Thanks.
And I just want to say, you know, this is a result of Kim's leadership as a teacher leader, creating this opportunity for our students to apply their knowledge and share it with others to make a difference. So it's very, very important work that you've led. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary, I think we're doing High School of the Future next. Yes, we are. And you can see Kim has stayed up here, and we have two other high school teachers joining her, Josh Halverson and Chuck Bublitz, along with Tracy Havishaline, who are going to talk about some of the visits that they have made to schools around the country and some of the learning that they have had in that process. They have had to condense this in a very short period of time, so bear with them, but there's really some exciting things we're learning. I'm going to go real quickly, just as an introduction. We, we had a presentation this winter where we only spoke about one school, and tonight we're going to speak about three schools, so, and try to do it in the same amount of time. And as you remember from the last presentation, if you can move to the next slide, our team members have now completed nine visits to high schools that were chosen from a list of 23 schools, and that's not to say there's just 23 model schools across the country, actually including one German school from Chuck that we reviewed, and then cho, excuse me, chose the nine schools to go visit. And as the team members went out to these various schools to visit, you, this is a diagram you've seen before, the teams were asked to study organization and structure, instruction, culture, professional development, curriculum assessment, leadership, and infrastructure of those schools as they relate to our strategic plan HSD 2025. None of this study at this point relates to the physical structure. We're really looking at how the schools are organized, curriculum, and all of that, all of that good stuff. After a site visit takes place, those team members that were on the site visit come back and give a presentation to the full team, and the team members then are given the charge, using a rubric, to look at whether the items that were presented fit within HSD 2020, 2025 and moving that forward as it relates to each of our graduate learner outcomes. So that's what the team is doing now, is taking all of this information, they still have presentations to make to the full team, and then we'll do the hard part next, trying to figure out, of all of the things that we've studied, what do we think most will move forward HSD 2025 the most? So I'm going to pass it on to Josh, and he'll talk about the school that his team went out to.
Okay. The school that I went to was Decatur Central High School in Indiana, so it's a kind of a community that is close to ours with size. It's about 1,700 students. And the reason that they wanted to design, again, is they were a little bit stagnant in data, where they were at 65 proficient, which I know Hudson's a higher rate than that. They have had other schools come and visit, in fact, a lot of schools, and some of the schools are coming to look at, you know, what they're doing in Edenclaw, how can that translate to college performance as well? I'm not sure what our data shows with what happens when school, or when students leave Hudson and go to college, but maybe a different look or design for high school might have an effect on that. The big idea is why they wanted to change is that relationships were number one. This is a school district where they have an influx of 30 students every month coming in and leaving. So they, they realize that teachers need to have good relationships with students. It needs to be relevant, what they're teaching. They can't be doing old techniques, they need to be up to date. And then the idea of rigor. They pulled some national model programs in, and I'll speak- They pulled some national model programs in, and I'll speak later on that as well. So, how is this school different? They broke it up into small learning communities, which means they have three hundred and fifty students in a pod, so the physical structure of the building keeps students in one area. So, their science teacher would be their science teacher, you know, nine through twelve, so there's an actual time for there to be a connection between the student and the teacher. And something that we thought was pretty interesting as well is the advisory program. Not really to be confused with the home room or anything like that, but this is where a teacher would have time to get to know a group of, I think it's like ten to fifteen With that comes also family advocacy, so connections with the parents. So, if there's a problem with math, it might actually be the science teacher that's going to contact the parent and figure out, you know, what's going on, how can we help, because that teacher knows that student best. When we were there, they were actually preparing for student-led conferences. So, their second conference they do, it's not, you know, a teacher and a parent, it's actually the student coming in and doing the conference. So, they're gathering information during this time. Something else that's really neat is the senior year looks, it's their goal to have all the seniors take a college class before they leave. I talked about youth options, they didn't really have something that we have in Wisconsin where the school picks up for it, but they still chose that decision that any student, regardless what class and where they want to go, could take a college or community college course, which was really neat. Next slide, please. So, the things that I thought were different, and want to speak to on that little spoke wheel that you saw, was the, the five learning communities and how they're actually located, where you'd have a principal, and at our high school, maybe, you know, we've got our assistant principals, but we have directors. So, everything was set up in that small community. They had, obviously, their basic school rules, but some of those could have been tweaked depending on the class and the environment and what they want to do. So, it's that small community, again, teachers knowing students and likewise. Because of this change, and they originally were not a school set up this way, they had to have instructional coaches, and they were usually part-time teacher and instructional coaches. One of these was a high-tech type, kind of like Project Lead the Way, but it was all the way through your English, your math, your science, everything. So, they needed to have those instructional coaches to show the teachers what they need to be doing. Something that was also really great about this is that every student got either their first or second choice. So, there was five small learning communities, and regardless how a student filled out their application, which was kind of neat, they'd almost be guaranteed their first or second choice. If a student decides it's not for them, they had to go in at least for a semester, but most of the time, once they got to that connection between teacher and student, they didn't want to move, you know? Some of the things that they've started to notice, the academics are starting to move a little bit, but not as much as they expect, because right now, attendance has improved greatly and behavioral. And I think once those two things take care of themselves, it's probably just a matter of time before the academics pull up as well. Next slide, please. These are the actual houses or small learning communities. What was kind of neat is they have two national models, so that's, again, like a Project Lead the Way where the curriculum's developed and the teacher implements it. One of them was a charter school, which we did not visit, but the New Tech High School of Ideas. We sat in on a class where students were designing rockets. It was one-to-one computing in a physics room, and then, adjoining that room was an actual shop. So, kind of getting that brain-on and hands-on type stuff. The rest of the academies are shown above, and they basically break down in kind of the major core areas, you know, the arts, math, science, English, stuff like that. So, it's a, it's a fit for anybody that wants to do it. Now, if you are kind of the, like, arts and humanities type person, but yet, you still want to take AP Physics, there's not a problem there. They allow you to cross lines and take classes and stuff, so there's no reason for you not to take a class that you'd like to take. Something else I said, and what's kind of neat, is they actually aligned a biology and a literature class. So, they're doing a project on Lee Harvey Oswald, and, you know, looking at the literature, and you have the biology as well, and it was really, really fascinating. You could take two opposite-end stuff and kind of mash them together. And that would be my very abbreviated Indiana school there.
I had the opportunity to visit Nutrir High School, which is in Winnetka, Illinois. And I'll start off by, first of all, saying thank you. I really appreciate the support that you guys have given us to implement this research journey. I certainly know I've learned a lot, I've benefited a lot from it. I think most everyone else on the, on the team can agree with me, and I think ultimately, and I hope that what we learned through this is really going to help improve the way that our students are learning and what they can achieve. And I certainly feel like some of the things that I learned while in Nutrir can do that. What you see up here is their school motto, "To commit minds to inquiry, hearts to compassion, and lives to the service of humanity." And I certainly know, in the very brief time I was there, for about five hours, and in that amount of time, I saw all of these things firsthand, how they implement that, and I was, I was very, very impressed. A little bit of background, and this isn't on any of the slides, it was, it was a community and a school that reminded me a bit of Hudson, north, you know, suburb just north of Chicago, very, very well-to-do community. The school was actually just grades ten, twelve. There was a ninth-grade campus, rather interesting setup. Their school districts are set up in elementary school districts and high school districts, so that if, there was a separate superintendent just for the nine-twelve community. So, they have a ninth-grade campus, a ten-twelve campus. To give you some perspective, their ten-twelve campus has portions that are a little over a hundred years old, and in grades ten to twelve, they have three thousand students. So, they have space issues that kind of make ours seem easy to deal with. Just kind of give you some background, but also, they are an extremely well-funded school district. They spend almost twice as much per pupil as the Illinois State average. They spend about fifteen thousand dollars per pupil at the high school level. So, they, they have a lot of, of community support, and I could tell why when I drove around the neighborhood next to the school, the houses were the size of our high school. So, if we can just go on, please. I'm going to give you a brief overview. There was, there was the nice, what's, wheel of, wheel of information that we've got with our organization and structure and instruction. When we visited it, there were three things that kind of stood out, and then, I'll present them to you as such. There were sort of a series of cultures that stood out, and the first one outlined here is culture of ownership. And we saw that, that both teachers, students, and administrators really had a really strong sense of ownership in the school, and a couple of things that really made that apparent, and I think that are things we can do to make our school better. First of all, is the advisor system. Josh touched on that a little bit with Decatur. It's, it's first hour, everybody does it, about twenty minutes. It's actually treated as a separate teacher prep, pardon me, so that if a teacher's going to teach a regular load of five classes, in fact, a teacher that is an advisor, and not all teachers are advisors, would teach four classes plus an advisory. And it's, it is the same thing like Josh talked about, that it builds connections, students have the same advisor all three years at high school. Everything goes through the advisor. If a, if a classroom teacher's having an issue, they call the advisor in. And that really gives each student a sense of belonging to the school, in a sense that there's somebody there that I think that knows them and that cares about them, and I, I can't. This stood out to me more than anything else. And coming back to Hudson, I looked at, I saw, and I thought about the number of students that maybe don't have an opportunity like that, and I see that as an area that we can grow in, providing a, a long-term connection to students. And so, it gave that sense of ownership. Obviously, they have an involved student government, much like Decatur, they also had a slightly different administrative hierarchy, in that the department chairs typically taught one or two classes, and then, the rest of the time, they spent doing administrative duties, teacher observation, teacher coaching, scheduling of teachers, that kind of thing. And so, there was a collegial sense in that the person that was doing a lot of the teacher observation and things was another teacher. And I thought that led to a stronger sense of ownership on the part of the teachers into what, what the school was trying to do. The thing that stood out to me more than anything else is, and the reason it says rather generically, "school, library, and hallways," was that in walking around a school of three thousand students, because of size issues, there are students that throughout the course of their ten-period day have no class. They're not, they don't have to be in a class, they have no place to go, for lack of a better word, they just go sit in the halls. And in walking around this school, I was astonished at how quiet it was and how clean it was, despite the fact that at any given time, there were, in every single hallway, there were kids that had no classes, that didn't have a direct teacher sitting supervising them, that they were sitting quietly, respectfully in the hallways, they weren't throwing garbage, they weren't going crazy. It astonished me, and it seemed to me to tie into the fact that these students really felt like this was their school, and this was a place that, that they had ownership in as much as anybody else. And I, to me, a lot of it had to do with the teachers, felt like they had a lot of ownership in what was going on, because they were a part of the process, and the fact that the students felt like there was, this was a place that they were cared for and that's, that they were known. So, that, that to me were the biggest things that stood out. If we could just go to the next one. A big part of that as well is, on this slide, I forgot to put the title, but this is what we referred to as a culture of choice. There were over a hundred and fifty clubs. The, the, in our meetings with the administration, they couldn't emphasize more how much they were looking to support any clubs. Students came with an idea, "I want to have video game club, I want to have walking on your hands club," that they were willing to support it and, and, and find a teacher that was willing to advise it. I, I touched a little bit briefly on the scheduling thing, students got free periods. That led to upperclassmen actually could leave campus in an open campus setting, and they had some online options. Professional development was very teacher-led, again, with those, those sort of pseudo-administrators being the department's heads. That led to some teacher ownership of that and choice in how they, they pursued professional development. And then, lastly, not, again, unlike Decatur, there was a senior year project. The last five weeks of their senior year, students, by and large, are off-campus pursuing a, a senior project that then they return and present on, excuse me, at the end of the year. Again, giving, you know, as I look at HSD 2025, kind of that entrepreneurial learning, giving them a chance to kind of think outside the box a little bit and explore what their potential career options and interests may be. And then, lastly, again, sans title, "Culture of Rigor" is the last piece that we referred to. So, a sense of ownership, a sense of choice, and then, a, a high degree of rigor, which I know Susie was real excited about with her, with her international baccalaureate background. Inquiry and rigor were real big things. The mission statement we touched on, addressing inquiry, addressing service. The ten-period day allowed for students to take a wide variety of classes in all subject areas, a lot of, of electives and things, pursue their interests, and to expose themselves to new opportunities and see maybe things that they might not have thought about, in fact, they're interested in. And then, finally, their class levels. Classes were leveled, as you can see, two through five, with the lowest-level class being referred to as a college prep. I'm kicking myself because I forgot the number, but I feel like something like, I may be making this up, but I feel like it was like something like ninety percent went to four-year colleges. It was a pretty outrageous number. Again, there's a socioeconomic factor there that you can't discount, but nonetheless, this school's taking maybe some of the advantages it's been handed and, and really maximizing them. And again, I sort of reflected on Hudson and some of, I think, the same opportunities that we have. And again, so just a high focus on that, at the least, you're going to leave here prepared to, to go on to, to college, whatever that may be, and, and that it grows from there, and that that's not the, the goal, that's the starting point. So, again, very impressed, and by more than anything else, the way that students and teachers were asked and encouraged to be involved in the process, and given ownership of it, and the effect that that had on the school and the culture that I witnessed. So, thanks again.
So, I was the lucky one that got to go to San Diego. High Tech High. You can head to the next slide, please. There's basically three high schools on their campus, High Tech High, High Tech High International, and High Tech High Media Arts. They kind of started off with different flavors, but because it's a charter school and a lack of funding, they, they both are, all three kind of now offer the, the same curriculum, and students are just thrown into one of the three. They don't get to choose, and it's the same, even though they have different names, it's basically the same curriculum that they're getting. Their driving philosophy is a quote from John Dewey, which is, "Understanding derives from activity," and they believe learning is doing. And so, the whole system is set up on project-based learning. Next slide. Goals and their guiding principles. Their goal is to personalize learning. They don't want to separate hands and minds, students from adults, students from the real world, and students from universities and colleges. They want to keep all of those connections in place. They also really believe in personalization. Their classes are small, twenty to twenty-four kids in a class. There's teaching teams, their English and social studies are, for the most part, team-taught, and it's called a humanities class, and science and math are team-taught. So, they really believe in, in teachers working together. Everything is based on student projects. They also have an advisory that's once a week, multi-grade, and those advisory teachers also conduct home visits. They're in contact with the parents, they take, they keep on track with what their kids are doing in their classes, much like the other two schools did. They, they talked about having this common intellectual mission, that there's an adult-world connection. They really want their kids to, to see where the next step is, and to have them connected to people outside in the real world. And their other big component was teacher as designer. Visiting their school is kind of unique. We have, there's three campuses, but transparency is essential. When you walk through the buildings, you'll notice that most of the classrooms are made of glass, so you can see everything that's happening in this classroom, and you can look across and see what's happening in another classroom. And the classrooms, like I said before, are very small in space, because there's only twenty to twenty-four students in each one. And then, in each of the buildings, there are really large multipurpose rooms where teachers can take their kids out of that really small classroom and into a bigger space that they can curtain off, where they can team-teach with another class and have a larger space with which to do projects. Teachers commonly team-teach and are able to open up those partitions and work with people in different areas. As far as curriculum is concerned, what was kind of impressive is, they really desire depth of learning and not breadth. So, they're not really focused on standards, they're focused on their kids getting the best possible education they can, and having it be deep instead of wide. Their projects are personalized and differentiated. Teachers design the curriculum, they don't have textbooks. So, their teachers are their designers, and they're the ones that are figuring out what's happening in their classroom, and they're in charge of that process. Each course is kind of centered around one really large, overreaching project, and they usually have three or four smaller projects that are kind of built into that. Students have internship opportunities. Their junior year, it's, I think it was fifteen to seventeen days' worth of an internship where they go out and are working in a, in a, what am I looking for? In a business, and they, then, they're super, or they're, they're watched. So, someone from the school comes in and observes them in that opportunity, and they want it to be meaningful. They don't want it to just be someplace where they're going and filing, they want them to be actually doing something productive. They focus on addressing student weaknesses, there's constant revision. So, throughout their projects, they're always talking with, "Okay, what do you need to do now? How can you go back and make this better?" So, that's always a constant in their minds. They do have an honors component, however, it's much different than the other two schools that we're talking about tonight. They have their courses, and then, if students want to have that enriched opportunity, they go talk to the teacher, and they are given more work to do in that class. So, they're still in the same course with everyone else, but they're required to do more. Next slide. As far as the culture goes, I talked about this a little bit, advisors make home visits, they have team-building opportunities where they're connecting with their students. Their advisor is the one that's checking on them in their, in all of their other courses. They also have a senior retreat at the start of their, of their year, of their school year, which kind of highlighted how the senior year is kind of treated differently. Each teacher is an advisor, and each school has a counselor that meets with students to prep them for college. Each senior is taken to four different college visits, and the advisor is the one that takes them. Adult-world connection, like I talked about before, is really important to them. They don't have textbooks. Teachers are given fifteen hundred dollars in addition to their budget to purchase anything they need for their course, and how they do it is kind of different, that each student, or each teacher is given a school credit card, and they say, "This is yours, you figure out what you need and do it." The students then are, are working on the projects that those teachers are creating. The students have a say in how they The students have a say in how they want to go about completing those projects. So there's, there is differentiation within the projects. And then at the end of each semester, the students have to present their project to a community. So it's teachers, their peers, people from the outside community. They're coming in to watch them and evaluate them. They also have a really big emphasis on bringing experts into the classroom. So they take people from the community that would be an expert in whatever field they're talking about and they have them come in and work with students. Either they're mentoring them or they're looking at their work and saying, "How can we revise this?" and getting input from those people who are experts. They have a school-plus-university connection, so they have college professors onsite helping staff with curriculum. And then they have those college days where each student visits four colleges and they also bring in 200 universities to talk with students. Performance assessment is one of their huge overriding goals. They use the habits of mind as an assessment model. The students, like I talked about before, present twice per year on their projects and they're evaluated by a panel, which should include, again, teachers, adults, and their peers. The key is, is that they have to pass in order to move on. So if you don't pass your project, you don't move on to the next grade. You go back and redo the project until you get it right. And the students have digital portfolios, which is an archive of the work that they take with them over the four years. And the big idea there is that they had to have these reflection pieces of what they learned, why it was important, what they would do differently if they had that opportunity. And then there's an annual exhibition where they show that. There's, like I said before, there's numerous conversations with students about their learning and what they're doing to revise that work. Is there a next slide? Is that it? I don't remember. Is that it? Okay, I'm good. Any, do you have any questions?
I have just a general question, then some specific ones. In terms of the process and what's the timeframe on this? What are, where are we going and what's the end result of what we're trying to do with this?
We still have several meetings yet. We have the summer yet and then a report, late summer, early fall, back to the board. Our hope is to put together for the board some of those, the key ideas that keep coming forward and what makes the most sense in moving HSD 2025 forward. We don't really have it all planned out yet.
Sure.
It was interesting, the school that Josh went to, Decatur, spent how much money doing exactly what we did? In two years? Two years? They received a grant.
Yeah, they got a grant. And one of the schools they looked at was Edumclaw-Washington that kind of started this, especially with the advisory period. And it was 20-plus high school teachers that went out, tens of thousands of dollars traveling. And not just Washington, I mean, they went everywhere that we, I mean, some of the schools we threw out. He's like, "Oh yeah, I remember going to that one. I remember going to that one." And they went in teams five, six, you know, not just, you know, one or two, to get different perspective.
So what we may be doing in the remaining time is taking advantage of Joe Prater, who is the principal at Decatur, having him come back to us and talking to us further because they had years of experience looking at way more models than we have looked at.
Tracy, you described the team, you know, there's a bigger team than what's here tonight.
There are 20 members on our team.
And how, what's the makeup of that?
The team includes Board Chair Barb Van Lonnen, Mary, and Sandy Peg. We have Susie Prather, who is an elementary representative, Jim Delune from the middle school. We have teaching staff from all different areas at the high school. We have parent representative and business representatives and two students who are also.
This is really important and timely because we're struggling with, what do we do with the secondary, you know, capacity issues? And so, I mean, this is, I mean, this was going to potentially drive anything that we do within kind of physical structures. What's really interesting to me is that as you described, you know, each of your experiences, there's some similarities that run through it and there's some real differences. I mean, in terms of project-based and I get the vision of our middle school, the pod that you described, and then the open campus, almost kind of the, you know, college scenario that I was envisioning as you were describing Chuck. It struck me that, I wonder what, part of the factor that drives some decisions from these communities is just the makeup of the community itself and maybe the kind of kids that you've got in that community, that type of thing. Would you agree with that or did you sense any of that?
I would agree with that and I think it also goes with the building structure as well. It seems like the newer buildings tend to hang on to the kids more during the day. I just visited Woodbury two weeks ago and they have their brand-new building. And again, they went with that kind of the pod format for the freshmen and then the upperclassman looks more like a traditional school. You know, but some of the other things that I think we've all hit upon is this advisory time and connections. And it's, you know, once you go over 1,500 or 1,000 students, you may only see them once in your career. And you're lucky if you see them twice. And when you do, it makes a huge difference when you know that student walking in. If I had them as a freshman and then I see them again as a junior, as a senior, we don't have that breaking the ice time. And they, they know me as well.
He was saying you see some similar things in the schools. And the one that I hit on, or the one that I saw was, I think all of you had home visits. They were connected, they actually went to the home and with the counselor or whoever or went into the home to help, to talk student, parent. I thought that was very impressive. And so it was, that was really interesting.
One of the things that, one of the things that, common themes, those are the things that we're going to bring back to the board and in summary at a later time. And as the board, as we talked at our April 21st meeting, this is a goal that we'll continue on into the next year, kind of moving into Phase 2, where we'll expand it into the high school and involve more people in this process of further development probably, based on direction the board gives us.
Oh, thank you, Barb. Just, and if you answered this to start, I apologize. How were these schools selected?
How many did we visit?
No, no, how were they chosen?
How were they chosen?
Yeah.
I did a lot of research looking at the Model Schools Conference and schools that were identified through, through that conference. But also just what I was hearing from other people. And once you start digging into it, it just kind of keeps growing. There were team members who brought schools forward.
Okay, all right. And I guess just sort of an observation, Tom mentioned this somewhat too. It does seem that sort of a common theme is sort of the personalization of instruction and the, I guess, development of personal relationships with the kids. With, you know, the smaller learning communities, advisories, as Pat had just mentioned. And, you know, again, the individualized instruction for kids. The one school, I don't know, was it, was it Josh, the one you were at, had the five sort of academies?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, so that's, having those different tracks, I think that's, that's, that's pretty interesting. So, you know, thanks for your report. Look forward to hearing you again.
Thank you. Moving on to topics for action. Mary, Race to the Top?
Well, we're back again talking about Race the Top and this time it's Phase 2. Just as a quick review, Race to the Top is a federal competitive state grant and it's designed to promote school reform and to turn around failing students in schools. You know, Wisconsin, often identified for high achievement as a state, it's also a fact that Wisconsin has the worst achievement gap in the nation. So certainly something that we can use in the state is looking at helping to turn around students in schools and more students to be successful. And you know, we've worked on that diligently in Hudson and continuing that work. In Phase 1, just as a reminder, the board supported the Wisconsin application for a grant and actually 97% of the districts in the state also signed the Memorandum of Understanding at that time. And that was one of the things during the judging that was identified as a strength of Wisconsin. There was a panel of judges that scored each of the state applications and then eventually Delaware and Tennessee were the only states that were funded. So the funds for Phase 1, we really didn't know how many districts would, or how many states would be funded and there were only two. Wisconsin's application for the first phase was rated very low. And so they have looked at that and now are proposing a new application that has some differences for Phase 2 that we're considering this evening. And the state is, is going to request $250 million. That's a little less than last time. And they will find out the results in September. It is assumed generally that about 10 to 15 states will be funded, but we heard that last time and only two were selected. So we're not really sure about that. The state is certainly urging us to support the Memorandum of Understanding and that's both from the governor's office and from the state superintendent's office. In Phase 1, like I already said that, you know, looking at the 30,000-foot view, taking that, what's the same in Phase 1 and Phase 2, the basic things that are the same. The state's going to submit this application and if they're funded, then districts who endorse the MOU will receive funding and who create a plan. District funding will be based on the level of money that the state receives. So that's the same. And then if the state receives funding, the districts will have 90 days to create either a work plan, how they're going to spend the funds based on the criteria and the requirements, or districts can opt out. So that's, that's still the same. There's still an opt-out portion. The areas of focus are similar. There's still 48 months to expend the funds. The funds cannot replace what the district is already doing. So new dollars, new initiatives. The state is requesting signatures again from the superintendent, the board president, and the teachers' union president. We have, Nancy and I have a meeting set up with teacher union representatives this week to talk about their support for, or to enlist their support for the Memorandum of Understanding, if you approve that this evening. Differences between Phase 1 and 2. To develop this application, it was a very inclusive process between the School Board Association, the Superintendent's Association, the Principals Association, and the teachers' union as well. And there is more money, based on the feedback they receive from this group, directed to the districts. So instead of $60,000 as being the floor that each district who participates would receive, no matter what, it's now $70,000. So they've raised it by $10,000. There's, so there's a chance for districts to receive more money with this plan. And for example, for Hudson, if the state is fully funded at the $250 million level, Hudson was going to receive before, a little over $300,000. In this proposal, even though the dollars that the state would receive are just a little bit less, a few million less, Hudson would receive $535,700. So even though it's a little less from the state, Hudson would be receiving a bigger portion of that. The plan itself is modified. For example, instructional coaches were required at each school and that has been eliminated. That's a, that's a great best practice. But they also realized how expensive that best practice was and the ability for districts to fund it and sustain it with the amount of dollars that they were talking about was impossible. So that has been eliminated. And there are another, a few other details that were very difficult that have been modified based on their consensus and compromise. And so this inclusive nature of creating Phase 2 probably will be seen as a strength as it's evaluated, but it could also be seen, and we don't know that, but it could be seen as too much compromise as well. So we don't know how it will be judged at the national level. On the surface, the plan in Phase 2 looks more workable with our vision, HSD 2025 and strategic plan. So that's, that's helpful to us as we look at this MOU. The questions still remain and some of those questions are, what are the specific detailed requirements of the plan? Will the funding level be sufficient to support the work plan that we have to design? What will the reporting requirements be? And will the reporting requirements essentially require us to have additional staff? Can we develop a work plan that advances our HSD 2025 vision and also meets the requirements? Certainly that's something we're very interested in. And do we have the internal capacity to do both? So those are things that are really primary questions. There are others, but those are really primary to us. We don't need to have the answers to those now. This is really, we're recommending administratively that we endorse the MOU to support the state plan. And this gives the state a chance to receive this money. It also makes way for districts throughout the state to receive additional financial support in a time of limited resources. And should the state receive funding and you approve the, or endorse the MOU, then we would come back to you with a recommendation of either, excuse me, to opt or develop a work plan. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I would go ahead and make a motion to go forward as we've done before in signing the Memorandum of Understanding, the MOU.
Okay, so Dan has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Discussion. Pat?
One point here, as I was reading it today and I talked with Mary, where is that, that, I was looking at this the last time as you had gone through and I was looking at that it would be helping, that they're focusing on probably Milwaukee schools or Title I schools and that I was, you know, hoping that the money would go to them, but I'm looking at here and if we don't sign up for this, they may not get it because we need all the schools in the state to sign up. So with my hope to help, you know, probably other schools, you know, that aren't as well-off as we are, that we need to help them by signing up. And that's what I saw today.
Others?
Just, just a question. We were rated very low initially in that Phase 1. Why?
Well, there are a number of reasons. One was a lack of union support, teacher union support was one of the key reasons. But there were a number of things in the application, and I can't be real specific about that right now, Mark. I know, Brian, you were, had some other pieces to that and right now I'm not thinking of those, but...
Yeah, there were 16 finalists, I'm reading here from Wall Street Journal. The, it was really about the fact that the, that the legislative leadership and the governor and the teachers' union were together and they made some pretty bold changes at the state level to make sure that this thing could be enacted. And so Tennessee and Delaware won where people thought, you know, states like Florida would win. And that was only like 600,000, $600 million. You know, there's the remaining 3.4 million or billion is still, you know, at stake here.
Still in play, okay.
Now, I'm just, just since I've got the mic here, I would also, I'd also encourage our union leadership to, you know, sign this kind of just in good faith. We don't know all the details yet, but we sure like to give our best foot forward right now and then kind of come back and look at the next step on this thing, so.
And we didn't, we didn't get that last time. You didn't?
No, we didn't.
We did not, okay.
3.5 billion, you know, we want to be eligible for it.
Other comments or questions? Okay. So all those in, the motion by Dan, seconded by Tom, all those in favor of...
So all those in, the motion by Dan, seconded by Tom, all those in favor of signing the memorandum of understanding as it's been presented, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next item in Topics for Action is to appoint a delegate to the CISA eleven annual convention for two thousand and ten.
And the convention is held on Monday, June seventh, in Turtle Lake at CISA eleven at seven o'clock in the evening. And so we do need to identify a delegate for this convention to represent the board.
Madam Chair, who was our last representative?
I believe the last representative was Lynn Robson.
I would be willing to nominate her if she's willing to do it.
So...
In the form of a motion.
In the form of a motion. Seconded by, motion by Mr. Chernahoy, seconded by Mr. Bell. It appears as though Ms. Robson has agreed graciously to represent us again at CISA eleven during the annual convention. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Lynn. The next item under Topics for Action, the Board of Education Committee structure.
I think I have that one. The Policy and Governance Committee met, met last week. Can you hear me?
No.
No? Hello, testing?
Better.
Okay, okay. I guess part of the waning moments of my leadership term, you know, I was working towards streamlining our committee structure. And the committee discussed some different options in terms of how we could restructure our committees. And what we, what we decided upon in coming to the board with a recommendation is, is doing way with the committee that I was chair of, the Policy and Governance Committee, so.
No reflection on this, there is...
So I think I'm out of a job. Anyway, the committees that we decided to recommend to the board to have are the facilities and grounds, which we currently have, finance committee, learning and program development, as well as personnel. Personnel would continue to be involved in negotiations, but we would, again, streamline the name to just be personnel. And so we have four main committees. We feel that that pretty much, you know, covers the topics and issues that come before this board. As far as how we deal with the types of issues that the Governance and Policy Committee had dealt with before, we thought we could just move those types of items as they come up into one of these four committees and appropriately get that work done. So I guess I would just go ahead and make a motion for approval of that committee structure that I described.
Okay, so a motion to approve the committee structure as recommended by the Governance Committee, the...
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor of the new committee structure, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item under... Oh, yes, thank you. A little coaching on the side is always good. So we, we certainly will have to have the board members be on unique committees. We all have served on specific committees. And I think all of us have served on one of the four remaining committees. I, I didn't intend necessarily that this year would be the year of fruit basket upset. But if there are folks who have a really strong desire to move from one committee to another, certainly let me know and then we can work through those changes. Thank you. All right, early childhood special education contract agreement with the Y, Mr. Holland.
Mister, Madam President, I thought that when I resigned from the YMCA, one of the benefits was going to be that I would no longer have to excuse myself from this meeting. But having read the, the agenda regarding this agreement, I think maybe it's best this time that I excuse myself just to avoid any potential perception of conflict of interest. I was involved with this agreement when I was on staff with the Y. And hopefully this will be the last time.
Okay, so Mr. Holland will recuse himself one final time. And Tim, it looks like you're going to take us through this.
I am, thank you. The agreement, what's the agreement involves is a, really a partnership between the school district and the YMCA. And we're exchanging services or space. What, what we're getting is approximately twenty-four slots or placements in the early, for the early childhood special education program. In exchange for that, between the months of June and August, we would provide space in the middle school for the YMCA and a program that they run called Summer Power. And we, we feel that conservatively, this, this agreement is going to save us somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars, and it's, it's conservative. But I, I'll let Corey talk a little bit about, about the program, early childhood program.
Thanks, Tim. As most of you know, we've had a relationship with the Y for a number of years. They've supported our four-year-old early childhood program. We've had four-year-olds attending there in the morning or afternoon sessions at least for ten years, if not more. And as you know, we continue to grow fairly rapidly at the early childhood level. We did a presentation at Learning and Program Development to, to highlight those things. So as part of this agreement to secure those slots or those placements, we are also expanding and adding a three-year-old program because of our growth. And roughly eighty percent of our growth being to three-year-olds. And the idea of creating services in natural environments with typical developing peers and also meeting our requirements for inclusion rates set by the federal law. This is a natural expansion with the Y. We're very excited about that. They're very willing to help us develop that three-year-old option, which will actually be ready, be in place now, right away in the fall. So this is a real strong partnership and relationship with the Y. And as we continue to grow, I think there's interest to continue expansion, of course, as the numbers require. So this is a real positive thing and really kind of reestablishes our agreement with the Y and clarifies expectations as we move forward in implementation.
Okay, I'm, am I going to talk a lot on this unless you have any specific questions for Corey or myself?
No. Is there a motion? I assume the administration's recommendation is for us to approve this agreement between the Y and the school district.
That's correct.
The President moved to approve the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven agreement with the YMCA.
A second.
Second, motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Chernahoy. Are there any questions or discussion about this agreement? I, I actually have one, and I'm not sure which one of the two of you it's for. But I, essentially what we're saying is that we will provide space to the Y during the summer program for their use. And then in exchange for that, what we're going to get is twenty-four spaces to use for our three- and four-year-old early childhood program during the school year. Am I right, though? We will still provide staff to supervise those twenty-four students that will be at the Y during the school year?
Yes, if you remember back when we approved the budget, you approved an additional early childhood teacher due to growth. And, and that teacher will more than likely serve at the Y as we expand the three-year-olds.
Thanks, Corey. Okay, motion has been made. It's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are moving smartly down the agenda and are at the consent items. So if there is someone that would care to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items with the expenditure specifics?
Madam President, move to approve the consent items, including the director of financial services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of one million, eight hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay, motion by Brian.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, committee reports. We are starting off with facilities and grounds. Tom.
Okay, we, the Facilities and Grounds Committee met on the May fifth. All the, all the committee members were present. And in addition, staff, Tim Erickson, Jim Stasko, Mary Bullen, Edgar Broden were present as well. We discussed, there were three agenda items, and then we adjourned to closed session. We discussed the scoreboard replacement issue. We've had some ongoing issues with scoreboards and made some decisions to move forward with that in the, in, with the replacement of those instead of spending the dollars to repair them. There are, there are three areas of scoreboards needing to be replaced. The Newton Field scoreboard at a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. The West Gym scoreboard at ten thousand. And the South Practice Field at the high school at ten thousand dollars. These scoreboards, I think, should be, should be noted, have about a lifespan of about twenty years or so. So that's, you know, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you spare it out over that period of time, it's, it's, I think it's well, well worth our investment. The next agenda item that we had was just reviewing summer projects. We have, for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget year that we're working on, and reviewing those projects, there are five hundred thousand dollars in this budget currently. Ninety-nine thousand of the five hundred thousand dollars in this budget is for emergency and contingency planning. There's also projects that include in the sum of about a hundred and one thousand dollars, energy efficient projects, which will have a return on our, on our dollars. And will, the end result will be some savings to the district as well. We did remove some, some, some projects and kept others. Probably one of the, most of the ones are, the ones that we did keep that weren't related to energy efficiency, had to deal with safety and, you know, security for our district. So I think it's prudent, and we'll just keep moving down this road as we review these projects further until we get to the budget final. Third, the third item was the middle school addition. There is a discussion about moving forward with Hoffman as the architect for the middle school project, not going to bid. It's not a requirement of the district that we go to bid for professional services according to our policies. There are basically several reasons why we would like to move forward in this, this manner without going to bid. One is time efficiency. A second one is certainly is our familiarity with them and the work performance that they've provided for us with this school, Rivercrest. And, and thirdly, their knowledge of us and what we're, what our objectives are and so forth. So the committee felt like we'd like to stay with Hoffman on this project. And that's what we're presenting. And then we adjourned to closed session pursuant to the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase or sale of public properties. So I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Tom? No, all right, thank you. And then finally, Governance and Policy Committee meeting, Dan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last committee meeting of the Governance and Policy Committee was held last week, and we discussed the committee structure as we just voted upon. And then we looked at three, three policies that will be coming back to the board next month that we just approved. And they were discrimination procedure guidance and counseling inter-scholastic activities. All of those were a result of a DPI civil rights audit that was done a few years ago, I believe. And it's sort of a periodic audit that they do. It's not something that they picked Hudson out for any special review. So I think we're pretty much in conformance now with those, those recommendations that we got from DPI. So that was it.
Any questions for Dan? No. All right, thank you, Dan. Don't appear to be any citizens' requests to speak. So with that, is there a...
Move to adjourn?
Motion by Brian to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.